Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming to the CC15 special session. Today is Thursday, March 2nd, 2023. I am Nancy Randall, Vice President of the CC, and I would like to call this meeting to order at 7:07 PM. We are coming to you remotely, and I would like to ask everyone here to please sign the attendance sheet that is in the chat. We currently have nineteen people on our call. Before we call the roll, I would like to invite the interpreters to introduce themselves and their languages. If we could please have the Spanish interpreters first?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. The following message will be in Spanish offering interpretation services. Buenas noches a todos. Gracias por estar acá. Si desea servicios de interpretación en español, por favor, márcete su teléfono al tres cuatro siete nueve seis seis cuatro uno uno cuatro e ingrese el código de conferencia uno cinco uno seis uno tres ocho dos nueve símbolo numeral. Le repito, si desea interpretación en español, por favor, márcete su teléfono al tres cuatro siete nueve seis seis cuatro uno uno cuatro e ingrese el código de conferencia uno cinco uno seis uno tres ocho dos nueve símbolo numeral. Si desea escuchar el audio en español pero desea permanecer en esta sala virtual para ver la reunión desde su computadora, por favor, recuerde silenciar el micrófono de todos sus dispositivos. Esto es muy importante para así evitar el ruido de fondo y garantizar la calidad de sonido durante la interpretación. Nuevamente, si desea de interpretación, llame, por favor, al tres cuatro siete nueve seis seis cuatro uno uno cuatro e ingrese el número de conferencia uno cinco uno seis uno tres ocho dos nueve símbolo numeral. Esta información será publicada en la casilla de diálogos regularmente. Gracias.
Thank you kindly. Could we please have the Cantonese interpreters? Can you hear me?
I guess I go first. There's two of us. So I'm gonna say in English. My name is Benson. I'm the Cantonese interpreter. I got hold. I'm a Mango Benson. Why come at only the funny you get? You're going to shop down on the company, go away, get the money, my name is Sam, see chat. Ah, go look, look, see, yes, say, ID, I'm one, look, but he is not Sam, Jack. You're going to my mind, they are, I can get your job, she goes in. Okay, thank you.
Thank you kindly, and could we now please have the Bangla interpreter?
Good afternoon, everyone. A message to Bangla. See, see, put or a special meeting. Shunde dial call, three, four, seven, nine, six, six, four, one, one, four, even as or din, one, two, one, nine, zero, nine, seven, five, four, has, seven. I'm a bar of bullshit, Bangla, shoot the dial, call, three, four, seven, nine, six, six, four, one, four, even, Kotti, din, one, two, one, nine, zero, nine, seven, five, four, even, has, seven. I know, but thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. And before I call the roll, could I please ask all of our council members to turn on your camera and keep your camera on during the meeting? Camille Castarini?
Present.
Antonia Ferraro?
Present.
Tia Shelston? Tia? Okay, Vincent Lu?
Present.
Nana Poco Aguiacu? Nana? Alfred De Angelis? Alfred? Joseph Alexander? Ivan Banda?
Present.
Nancy Randall, I'm present. Vanessa Gonzalez, who yoga? And Nakia Mujassabra.
Present.
All right, thank you, everyone. Do we have quorum? One, two, three, four, five, six. Yes, we have quorum. Antonia, should I go ahead and give the introduction to the CC or should I pass it over to you to do so?
If you'd like me to, if you'd like a break, I can read the introduction, or if you'd like me to play the role of parliamentarian.
Sure.
Tonight, yes, since we don't have Joe, so maybe that makes sense. Okay.
So I'll go ahead and read the introduction and then pass it on over to you. All right, everyone. Thank you for coming to the District 15 Community Education Council tonight. We appreciate your time and are glad you could join us. For those of you who are new to CC meetings, there are thirty-two CECs throughout the city plus four citywide councils. Each CC represents a community school district and each is made up of eleven volunteer members, nine of whom are elected by parents in the district. The remaining members are appointed by the Brooklyn Borough President, and we have one high school student member. CC15 is a state mandated public body responsible for ensuring that public school parents and the public have input and educational decisions that are made at the school district level. Our council reviews education policies and advocates for high quality education that benefit all of our district's public elementary and middle school students. CC15 serves thirty-five elementary and middle schools and one high school under the oversight of our superintendent. CC members serve in an advisory role on education matters to the district superintendent, the chancellor of the Department of Education, and to state and city elected officials. We approve district school zoning lines submitted by the Department of Education. We evaluate our district superintendent. We review the district's educational programs, and we support school leadership teams. We also submit recommendations for the School Construction Authority's annual capital plan. And as of recent amendments to the law, CECs advise in selection of parent coordinators. We actively seek input and feedback from the public and encourage you to visit our website, Take a look at our Facebook page, connect with us on Twitter, and write to us about any issues you may want to address or learn about. Each school has a CEC liaison. All of our names and contact info are available on our website. Please remember to sign the attendance sheet. And now I'll pass it over to Antonia, our parliamentarians.
All right, yes, tonight I will be playing the role of parliamentarian. The mayor has extended his local state of emergency to address COVID-19 pandemic through March 21st, 2023. That means tonight's meeting can take place remotely and will include a public comment period. We will take remote comments to gather additional feedback from our families and school community members. You may leave your camera on or for your own privacy. If you prefer, you may use audio only during the comment period and throughout the meeting. Rules of engagement. When you comment, please respect the privacy of others. Please do not include names of children or staff. Guests who make inappropriate comments will be removed from the meeting. During the public comment period, those attending virtually may raise their hand to comment or indicate in the chat that they would like to speak. Those called upon will be unmuted. Speakers will be called on one at a time and will be allowed one minute each for a comment. We will hear as many speakers as the time allows. It is possible that not every comment or question will be given time. So it's always best to get your questions answered by writing to cc15@cc15@schools.nyc.gov and I'll put that email address in the chat for you all. Um, CC15 members will also be given a comment period and members will be called upon and are each permitted one, two-minute comment or question. If members do not have a comment, they may cede their time to the chair. And now I will return it back to our chair. Nancy Randall.
So much, Antonia. Tonight, we have Tamara Smith, Community Relations Manager in the External Affairs Department at the School Construction Authority. The New York City School Construction Authority's mission is to design and construct safe, attractive, and environmentally sound public schools for children throughout the many communities of New York City. They also implement improvements to schools known as REZOA projects that come about through city council and borough president grants. Sometimes these proposals are voted on in the participatory budgeting process. Tamara will present on the five-year capital plan for fiscal year 2020 through 24. District 15 has many ongoing capital improvement projects. We will get updates on those projects completed, soon to be completed, and those about to commence. Thank you so much, Tamara, for being here, and I'll pass it to you.
Thank you so much, Nancy, and to the whole CEC. Good evening. It's really nice to see you all again. My name is Tamara Smith, and I'm from the New York City School Construction Authority. I'm going to share my screen and just, please let me know when, and hopefully, everybody will be able to see that. Can everyone see it now?
Yes, we can see it.
Thank you so much. All right, so Nancy, thank you because you read our mission, which is on the front page of this presentation. As Nancy mentioned, we are in the midst of our capital plan, which is a five-year document, a five-year plan for fiscal years 2020 through 2024. And each year, twice a year in November, and then again the following February, there are proposed amendments to the capital plan. So this, and in each November, proposed amendment, we go to every CEC in the city and present the proposed amendment to you and to the public. And after we go through this process, the amendment goes to the city council and then the mayor for approval. And often, the amendments add money and projects, so it's usually very good news. So I'll go through this, and I'd be grateful if you'd allow me to go through the whole presentation. It's not very long, and there'll be questions and answers afterward. Thank you so much. Okay. So, as I mentioned, the fiscal year 2020 through 2024 capital plan. As you can tell, we are almost in the final year of our plan, and the next one will be in the works and will be released in summer of 2024. And the full capital plan is $20.1 billion. And it's divided into three major categories. And they are capacity, which is our brand-new schools. They are standalone buildings, their leased buildouts, their additions to buildings. And of the 20.1 billion, 8.75 billion is devoted to that category. Just skipping the middle for a moment, and I'll get back to it. Capital investment, that is all of the repairs and updates to our existing school buildings. It's the second major category, and $7.87 billion is devoted to that category. And mandated programs, which are programs that are mandated by state, federal, and local laws, are, that is the third major category, and $3.49 billion is devoted there. So the SEA citywide highlights. And of course, all of this funding is divided through all five boroughs and the thirty-two local school districts plus the four that were mentioned earlier, the high schools, and so there, the highlights are $7.87 billion for new capacity in the new schools I mentioned, $750 million for accessibility projects, $400 million devoted to electrifying our buildings, more than $1 billion for technology, and $317 million for removal of TCU's trailers, and then the playground redevelopment that goes along with that. So for one of the major categories, capacity projects, again, it's $8.75 billion altogether. It's divided into these five subcategories. So for brand-new capacity, brand-new buildings and leases and additions, $6.02 billion is devoted to new capacity, replacement programs. If, if schools need new buildings, and if they must move out of a leased building, we have $936 million voted there. Class size reduction, $655 million. Capacity to remove the TCU's, as I mentioned, $267 million. And early education, our pre-K and 3K initiatives, $876 million. So, going specifically to District 15 capacity projects in this five-year capital plan. As you see, we have one, two, three, four, five major schools that are planned and in design and in construction, and their anticipated occupancy dates. And early childhood projects after that. So in capacity, we have 1,958 new seats coming to District 15. Through early childhood, we have one pre-K and three, three Ks, two of which opened this past September, and the pre-K and 3K opening this coming September. For a grand total of 525 seats in this capital plan. And then we want to go back to the last plan to see what was opened recently. We had a school on Fifth Avenue and Sunset Park open this past September, 404 seats, and then two that will be opening this year on Eighth Avenue and Fourth Avenue, for a total of 660 seats. So these two, which are over 1,000 seats, be added to the 1,900 that are designed and construction in this plan. So that's nearly 3,000 seats for District 15. Okay, and here is the beautiful school that opened in Sunset Park that I mentioned on Fifth Avenue and Thirty-Sixth Street. Gorgeous lobby with artwork, kitchen, classroom, and cafeteria. It's K671. Grade served K through five, open in September. This is K730. It is in construction, as you can see. It'll be opening this September, and it's on Eighth Avenue and Forty-Sixth Street. It will be serving grades three through five. It'll serve as the upper school for a school that was open a few years ago. This is the old precinct building finally opening this September. Very excited about that. Here's a rendering course, and this is it under construction. It's coming along very well. This is a, the pre-K on Eighth Street in Guanis. Hundred and eighty seats, opening this September, also coming along very beautifully. Here we have a school is a leased building, a former Catholic school on President Street and Park Slope, and it will be opening in September 2024. So just a few examples of what's going on in District 15 capacity-wise. All right, now on to capital improvement projects. The SEA performs major capital improvement work in existing buildings in addition to building new schools. This work includes projects such as masonry repair, window and roof replacements, HVAC systems, public address systems, major plumbing, repairing major plumbing issues, and all of the other categories that you see here. The SEA focuses on major building systems. I do recommend everybody take a look at our capital plan, which is online. And you will see that there is also funding devoted to such things as athletic fields and science labs and, you know, auditoriums and libraries, but the main part of our capital plan is devoted to keeping our buildings watertight and safe and functional for the next hundred years. The DOE's Division for School Facilities, DSF, which include school custodial engineers, plant managers, facility directors, and central staff, is responsible for day-to-day maintenance and repair of school buildings. They have a tremendously complicated job. We work together very closely, but we are separate agencies. And the question on everybody's mind, how does something become a capital project in the SEA's five-year capital plan? And all of these pathways are simultaneous. Everything goes on at once. In addition to suggestions from the CECs, there are several other routes, including a yearly building condition assessment survey, or BCAST, where a team of engineers, architects, and others from the SEA go to visit every single building in the entire system. It's around 1,200 school buildings now. And we generate a report that looks at every single aspect of a building, literally from basement to roof and everything in between. Every architectural element and everything else, and rates each element, takes a close look to see what their, the needs are, what the major needs are in that building. And anyone can look at their child's BCAST report. It's on the DOE website on the, the individual page of each school under reports, I believe it is. And you can take a look, and they're very, very interesting. They're narrative and diagrams and photos and give you a real sense of how your building is doing. And those buildings that have conditions that need repair may become capital projects. Then there are problems reported to the DOE by DSF. They're in the buildings every day, and they know the buildings. If they see a problem that's much too large to be repaired once more, it may become to the SEA and become a capital project. And of course, emergency issues. If, if a piece of masonry falls from a building during a storm, anything that's possibly dangerous, we come right in, put up a shedding, and, and then investigate what's going on and see whether it's something that can be quickly repaired or whether it becomes, needs to become a larger project. As Nancy mentioned, funding from elected officials, the rezaway projects. They complement the capital plan, and we're very grateful for the funding that they give because it allows schools to do a lot of incredible projects that might not be in the capital plan. And then citywide initiatives, things like the air conditioning initiative for Mayor de Blasio or PE for All, which allowed us to construct standalone gyms. So these are the roots to becoming a capital project. All right, so in District 15, capital investment in your existing school buildings is summarized here. So all of these are major capital categories. The cost and the number of projects, its highlights from the, the whole capital plan from 2020 to 2024. As you can see, $132 million has been a tremendous commitment to District 15 schools. And here are some of them. IS136 exterior modernization. You can see this is right after it was finished, how beautiful the masonry looks. Same for PS295 New Voices, incredible, beautiful old buildings. Nicely restored. MS51, we just finished an exterior modernization here a couple of months ago. PS321, just beginning, we're last few months, starting an exterior modernization. Same for PS169. PS15 has an exterior modernization and a full accessibility project going on. Okay, and now the rezaway projects. I also, I sent a, our most recent brochure on the rezaway process to the CEC, so they can, you can share it with your members and with your schools. We really encourage schools to apply. And here you can see that your local electeds have made a huge commitment to District 15 as well. So 420 rezaway projects, and this is the past two capital plans for $50 million. And then the highlights of the capital categories are here. You can see a lot of technology. That was a major focus of Councilmember Lander and, you know, and, and also some other wonderful projects for more than $38 million. And here are some beautiful examples. Here's the Red Hook Neighborhood School, which just had two wonderful projects wrap up, an auditorium and library, completely renovated and very beautiful, as you can see. And these are two that are underway. PS169 auditorium upgrade, this is the before. So we just are getting started there. And the PS1 playground upgrade is underway. The current photos are pretty much of a construction site, so I thought I'd show you the before. And next year, you'll have the after. All right, MWLBE. So the SEA is very proud to increase the participation of minority-owned, women-owned, and locally-based business enterprises, MWLBEs on SEA projects, including through MWLBE targets on our projects. Now, the reason this is significant is that the SEA, just by virtue of being in the largest city in the country and the largest public school system in the country, is one of the major employers of construction firms. And so there's a major commitment to these groups, these enterprises, so that we can encourage people who own these, these companies to get involved with construction in our city through capital, through mentoring, and to really bring up people in, who own these firms. And we also run a mentor program, which provides key support and access to capital and business opportunities for qualified emerging MWLBEs. So we want to highlight that. In fiscal year 22 citywide, the SEA awarded $778-plus million in prime MWLBE contracts across 413 projects to 186 such firms. And in FY22, the SEA Mentor Program awarded more than $100 million in contracts across 329 projects to 110 firms. And in District 15 specifically, the SEA has $226-plus million in active contracts across 126 projects to 57 firms this fiscal year. And that's the end of my presentation. Here's the CEC billion, building comment form, which you're familiar with, and I know that you've given in. It's a tool designed for CECs to submit requests to improve and maintain existing and new school structures. So thank you so much for submitting these. We really appreciate it. We just, I think, two days ago, had the February amendment come out. And so some of those projects may have been included there, others may be included in the next amendment. But we really, really value those suggestions and those requests.
All right, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And now we'll start first with public comments, so I'll pass it to Antonia to see if we have any questions from the public.
Sure, let me, let me look in the see if there are any hands raised. Members of the public, just so you know, you are permitted to raise your hand to make a comment or ask a question of our guest. I'll ask the interpreters if there's anybody on the Bangla line who has a question?
There is no question from the Bangla line. Thank you.
On the On the Cantonese line, is there anyone?
No question from the Cantonese line.
Okay, and on the Spanish line?
There are no questions at the Spanish line at this time.
Okay, great. I do see one hand raised from Rehan. Rehan, you can unmute yourself.
Thanks. I was just wondering if we wanted to look and see which projects are included in those capital improvements in RZO, a project that you lumped together for the whole district? Are those identified in the BCAST report for schools, or is there another way to figure out what's getting funded at your particular school?
Great question. No, they're not in the BCAST report. They're in our capital plan. So let's see, I was gonna add it to the chat here. Just type in our website, nyceca.org, and then there's a tab called Community. And then after that, you can take a look at the most recent Capital Plan Amendment. And at the end in the indexes, each district listed by district, you can take a look. You'll have listed projects that have been completed and are coming up.
Great, thank you.
All right, I see some questions in the chat. There is a question from Janet S. When was that survey sent out to vote for where that money should go to? If you mean the comment form, it was sent to the CEC a couple of months ago. And I think that that's what you mean. And the CEC submitted it back to the SEA's Capital Plan Department a few weeks ago. All right, I don't see any other questions from the general public. I will now go to questions from the CEC members. Camille, do you have any questions?
I do. Hi, Tamara.
Hi, Camille.
I thank you so much for being here tonight. I have one, which is just a clarifying question, that building on President Street, the former St. Francis Xavier, what is the use going to be?
It's planned as an elementary school.
Okay, I'm sorry if I missed that, if you said that. And so I just wanted to flag that two of the schools that I'm liaising with, 447 and DHS, and two totally different buildings, are both co-located and both need more space. So how does this work? 447 is co-located with High School for the Arts. High School for the Arts is at capacity right now. 447, well, I know this building in and of itself is just like an enigma, but 447 needs their own space. So I keep coming back and saying this for a few years now, and I hope that there's going to be some progress on that. And DHS is bursting at the seams. So wondering if there's a way that you could send Success Academy somewhere else, perhaps?
Well, that's not up to the SEA. So those decisions are made by the DOE, our friends at Space Planning, District Planning, the superintendent. The SEA is, we do do the bidding of our colleagues. We find a space where seats are needed. But as you know, things have changed sometimes. Sometimes they're planned for one thing, and then, you know, situations change. The last few years has certainly seen enormous changes. And so those conversations, you know, need to be with those entities. And, you know, you have a couple of years. So maybe that's, you know, and we do our best with the information we have, the demographics information, the housing starts, and where the seat need is at the time. But again, yeah, if that's going to change, it would be a DOE decision.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to flag that the interpreter has a question in the chat. So let's make sure that we go to the interpretation lines as well.
Yeah, why don't we go there next to that question from the Bangla line? What will happen to St. Francis Xavier School at Morris Park? It said it's closing. I don't know. So Morris Park is in the Bronx, so I'm not familiar. We have heard about some Catholic schools that are closing, and the diocese and the archdiocese are two, really are some of our strongest partners in the city in terms of providing spaces. So I don't have an answer on that one, but I know that anytime a Catholic school closes, it's something that we talk about with the archdiocese in the Bronx and Manhattan, and diocese in Brooklyn and Queens, I think. And, you know, that maybe that's a possibility there, but I don't know. I can look into it, though. I'd be happy to, and get back to the CEC. Okay, and Camille just wants to highlight that we are referring to St. Francis Xavier in Park Slope. Right, that's the one I was talking about. But I'm sure there are plenty with the same name across the city. Right, okay. I am the next one up for questions. I don't have a question. I just want to say that when I started on this council six years ago, we had a deficit of seats of approximately 3,000, and it's lovely to see that we're opening 3,000 seats. So it's a huge achievement for our district, and thank you so much. Well, thank you all so much. When I first met you all, you're exactly right. That was the situation, and we've all worked together very hard and very closely in partnership to make sure that this happens for District 15. All right, let's see. Tia Schelsteed is still not here. I'll go to Vincent Lu.
Oh, no, I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. And is Alfred on the line?
I am.
Okay, great. Do you have a question?
I do not, Antonia. Thank you very much.
Sure. Joseph Alexander is still not here, right? Yvonne Bonda, do you have a question?
Not a question, but it's just the procedure of things. We at the CEC, we do the walkthroughs, we make the list, we fill out the surveys, we vote and all that. And then, just for the public and for some of us, walk me through what's the, what is the timeline and the different steps in order to, for example, when we ask for one of the schools for the heating system, you know, just to...
Sure, yes.
And thank you very much for your presentation. It was so clear. Again, you're always doing this.
I appreciate that. Okay, so great question. The first thing, so remembering that we have 32 local districts and four rather citywides, and each gives a top five, and then often many other requests, but the top five are considered first. So that's a lot of projects to look through, over 150 to carefully consider. And what we do is, we, for example, you mentioned the heating system. What we would do probably in a case like that, I don't know what school it is, so I'm just as theoretical, we would go and see, one, is the project already being planned? In great cases, it is, and then it's happening, so that's good. Or we might go back to the BCAST report and consider the school and realize, well, it could use some repairs, but maybe it doesn't need to be an SEA project. Maybe the custodian or DSF could do a repair that would improve it. Does it need to be a large capital project? Or does it need a complete replacement? We consider that. If it does, and if our investigation agrees that it really needs to happen, it could become a project. But remember, these projects have to be prioritized across the whole city, you know, and I know 20 billion sounds like a lot of money, and it is, but it also has to, you know, take care of many, many buildings and many, many projects. But something like that could become a project. If it does, then it would appear either in this February Amendment, or perhaps next November's Amendment. It depends a bit on things that I don't fully understand about the capital plan, like fiscal year wrap-ups and all that. But if we agree that it needs to be a major project, then it could appear in one of the two amendments, or maybe sometime in the future. Maybe it's doing okay for now, and maybe there's even a warranty that allows it, and we know it's in decent shape, and it's got a good five, 10 years, then maybe in the future, it'll become something. Sometimes we look at a list and we realize some of this is really best for a rezaway request. We just don't have the money in the capital plan for whatever it is. And then we suggest to the CEC that it could be, you know, the sort of school, too, that it's best as a rezaway, you know. We give that advice. We'll say, you know, this sounds like a rezaway project. Probably great to approach your council member or the borough president about this one. So we really, really carefully look at them. And if it happens, and if we agree with all of those factors taken into account, it will be in the amendment. And so that's how it works. And in a few months, our capital department, our capital department at the SEA will respond to the CEC, and you'll see your list and all of our comments. And sometimes you'll see, you know, added to the capital plan, and other times it will see, this is better as a rezaway. And sometimes we'll say, this was already in the works. So good news. So that's how that works. All right, we will go to Nancy Rendell.
All right, thank you so much for your presentation. And I'm curious about a specific project. PS-321 had requested an upgrade to their heating system. Do you know what, if that was decided, that would be done under SEA?
I don't know. The Capital Plan Department, as I mentioned, does this whole process, and I'm not in that department. So I'm not sure, but I can find out. They have a big project going on there now, so I don't know. And I mean, one thing to keep in mind is, even if it is approved, it certainly takes a little while, as the project has to be designed and then bid out and all of that. But I could find out. I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Camille, I see your question here. Does the SEA collaborate with the Borough President about rezaway projects? Must principles apply for the rezaway grants through the VP's office, or is SEA advocating for that funding as well? No, we don't advocate for that funding. We don't collaborate in that process. Schools apply to their council members and/or the Borough President, and then if they're funded, it flows through the SEA, and then we carry out the project. So yes, they should definitely apply to the VP's office. I think that deadline's coming up fairly soon. Or I think it passed. Yeah. Yeah, it just may have passed a few days ago. Yeah, yeah, okay. Is Vanessa Gonzalez-Uroka here?
I am. And I just have one question. I'm sorry, I'm in the mood, so I'm gonna, can you come back to me in a second?
Sure, sure. Nikia, do you have a question?
Yeah, actually, yes. Thank you, Tamara, for the presentation. That's fantastic. The question I'm about to ask, you probably answered. So I do apologize if you mess with me or repeat yourself. When will, so for instance, 146 in Carroll Garden is on the top five to get their windows replaced, because they've been sandblasted and damaged over time. So for projects like that, how can we, as liaisons for these schools, monitor, you know, what the SEA determines as, you know, a project that they're going to take on, a project that is, as you said, already in the works, so that we can maybe give updates to the schools from time to time? Because like you said, yes, it's gonna take a long time, but at least...
Right. Yeah, no problem. So the best way is to look right at the capital plan. I think somebody, Rehan, put in the chat where District 15 starts, assuming this is the most recent one. I think this is probably the February Amendment, and you can see it. You may not see that one just yet, but taking a look. But just to also let you know, when we have a project that's in the works at a school, we reach out to the school right away with a series of meetings and a kickoff meeting with the design team and a series of notifications for quite a long time. So schools do know when large projects are coming to them. It really is, you know, they pop up in the capital plan. They go into what's called scope or pre-scope. That's the very first stage. And during that stage, we start talking to the school right away. So they do know. But for you all, the best place to start is the capital plan and that ending part that lists the District 15 projects.
Thank you. I have, by the time, Antonia. So I wanted to know, just random, I suppose, one of the aspects of the plan, or one of the pieces of the plan is, I think it was supposed to say electrifying, right? So are those, you know, does the SEA consult with, on energy efficiency for that type of, for those types of projects?
Yeah, yeah, we have something called the Green Schools Guide, which you might be interested in seeing. It's on our website. And it's a really thorough, our standards for green schools are, you've heard of LEED certification, maybe for buildings, that Green Schools Guide is even more stringent than that. And whenever a big change like this, like electrifying school buildings come, yes, we have environmental consultants, we have a whole, you know, all kinds of people who come in to let us know what the best and most, what the best practices are, and what, how we push our city as a whole ahead environmentally. And that's really what this electrifying is all about. It's ending the use of fossil fuels like gas and oil. And in the future, our brand-new buildings will not have oil furnaces at all anymore. Kitchens will be fully electrified, hot water, HVAC systems, the whole thing. So yes, yes, that's a, that's a big change happening in the city, public buildings in general, and schools in particular for us. So we have a lot of really rigorous consulting going on to make sure that we're doing it right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Vanessa, are you...
I am. Thank you for that, for waiting. So my question is, you mentioned earlier that when the CEC submits a list of their priorities, and then in addition to that, some recommendations or things that they make into a high priority list, sometimes you look at the priorities and you decide that a project is already ongoing, or there should be a different body that takes care of that. So you move down the list, and at what point are the recommendations from the CEC making it to the list of priorities and it's actually taking the space of things that, projects that you engage in, that you, you know, work on?
So if we determine that we're all on the same page, and we agree that a project that's requested is something that we can do, it will appear, we'll make it a capital project, and it will appear in the next. it will appear, we'll we'll make it a capital project, and it will appear in the next, in the next capital plan amendment. So sometime within this year, but also the Capital Plan Department will respond directly to the CEC with the list and with all of our comments. So you'll know how, what what we thought about and what we recommend and what's going on with each of the recommendations. So the ones that are accepted can become a part of the the next capital plan amendment. So you'll see it there.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I know I get two minutes. I'm gonna sit my time to anyone that has any questions in the council.
Does anybody else on the council have any questions?
Antonia, can I take the time of someone appropriated his chair tonight?
Yes.
Thank you. I wanted to ask about the charter school renovations. When there's a co-located school, what is the relationship with renovations, right? With the charter and co-located school where, exactly how the funding especially? And then is it possible to see a list of projects that are happening where there are co-located charters?
So first to that second part, I don't think we have a list where it's pulled out in that way. It's, you know, there are so many charter schools, and some of them move in, they move out. It we don't really consider it that way. I will say this. DOE buildings are what we renovate. And whatever student is in that building, that's what we focus on. We don't make a distinction in that way between, because a lot of the renovations that we do benefit the entire building, right? Like an HVAC machine, you know, or a roof or masonry. Everybody benefits from a building being kept watertight. There's no distinction at all. Larger spaces like an auditorium renovation, generally the whole building uses it, and so everybody benefits. It may be that one school particularly applied for the funding, but everyone uses it. Everyone uses the library, the cafeteria, the gym. There are times when a particular school has one whole, one floor, and they ask for a science lab in their part of the building, and only they use it. And sometimes that happens. And that can happen with a charter school, too. They make a request for a space that only they have access to on one particular floor. But we don't, we don't make distinctions in that way. It's it's our building. And we renovate the spaces in that building. But most of the things we do are accessible by most of the people in the buildings because they're major systems that everyone shares, you know? Yeah, so yeah, I don't think we have a list. Okay, so Camille added some information there in the chat. Charter spends 100. You know, I don't know. You probably, you probably, you may be right about this, but I really can't confirm that exact those details. But I have people, luckily for me, I do have access to number crunchers at the SCA who can probably confirm whether that's, whether that's the case. I'll have to look into that. All right, please do look into that and get back to us because I do believe Camille is right about the reciprocity between the the renovations of a charter in a DOE building and the the district school is supposed to also get the same amount of money for the.
Well, but that, if a charter spent its own money, that may be the case. That the SCA doesn't, you know, SCA funding comes from the city as a whole. And that's, so I think that that's, that's, yeah. I mean, if a charter school decided with its own money from its own backers to fix something in a school, maybe then there's the reciprocity, but the SCA would not take the charter school's money to to renovate. We don't do that. We renovate the building. Yeah.
I see.
With the cap, with capital money.
Um, all right, well, are there any other questions from any other members? I'll go and look.
I'm sorry, I just, I just want to get a better understanding of, so, so if the charter is in a co-located building and they're doing renovations with their own money, so how would that match work? Where would the money come from then?
That is not, I don't know. I mean, charters are sometimes backed by, you know, a board with a lot of money, and some some are, and some are small and don't have that. Maybe they do private. I really, I don't know. And also, it's so different from network to network. I mean, Success Academy is a huge charter network. But Bugs is a small independent charter with very different, you know? So yeah, I'm not sure. I think it really differs.
Okay, well, is that it from everybody? Oh, Rehan has a question. Okay.
I didn't know if I could still ask one after you guys.
I will.
One second. So it sounds like the CEC puts forward some priorities, and then I assume you guys evaluate them. Do you provide responses on why you didn't fund any of the priorities?
Yes, well, a full list of your, a full response is provided to every CEC. So your entire list and then SCA comments. Yeah, so answers are given. Sometimes it's as simple as, you know, this is a, basically, we we recommend a ResoA project here, or this is a DSF project. For example, it's not a huge capital project. It's something that could be repaired by the Division for School Facilities. So yeah, we provide comments.
Okay. So we have those, I guess.
Not yet.
The windows.
No, I mean, the list was just given in a couple of weeks ago, so.
Oh, I see. Those wouldn't have been expected to be in the plan through 2024. That would be in the next.
Well, yeah, it's just, there's hardly any time between when the list is given in in the February amendment. So generally, that doesn't happen, but maybe in the next November amendment, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But you'll get your response before then.
And I will just point out that we put the link in the chat to our SCA capital plan spreadsheet that we submitted just a couple of weeks ago. All right, I don't see any other hands up or questions in the chat. So I will turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you so much, Antonia. It is 8:06, so being aware of everyone's time, I do note that in the agenda next, we have new business. I will ask if there is any new business. Potentially, we may need to postpone it, but is there any new business that anyone wanted to address? Okay, seeing no responses, then Tamara, thank you so much for speaking to us tonight, for the information, for the presentation. Thank you all for being here, and I call this meeting to an end at 8:06 PM.
And thank you to the interpreters for all their assistance.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone.